Good evening. It is five thirty-two on Tuesday, August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Chairman John Hastings presiding. Also present are Commissioners Amelia Boyd, Grant Simmons, Wayne Benner, Scott Torpey, Most Uncle, and Ivan Ramar are absent at this time. And we will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will stand.
Let's see that hair, John.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any general announcements from Commissioners? From staff? Seeing none, we shall move on. The next is approval of the minutes from our July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, and I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Don't move.
Second.
There we go. It's a race. Okay, it has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes and the minutes are approved. We have no old business and no public hearings scheduled this evening, so we will move on with new business for some training from legal counsel and city staff. And I will now yield the floor to City Attorney Fonda Jovick.
Really be first?
Well, that's what it says. I'm just following. You're the only one listed, just saying.
Well, I'm going to yield the floor.
That you certainly may.
For your new city planner, Mr. Bill Dean, and he's going to get us started tonight, and then we're going to tag team some training with.
Feel free to.
Thank you, Fonda. And Commissioners, good evening. It's a real pleasure to be here again. For the record, my name is Bill Dean. I'm a new city planner. I'm delighted to be here. In my business, this is a little slice of heaven. It's really a pleasure. I'm humbled to be able to assist this community in reaching its goals as envisioned to council and the comp plan and all your work. So I'm very much looking forward to getting to know you and working with you over the next several months and years as we dive into a highly technical part of the land development and community development process, which is, you know, looking at your zoning code and making some revisions where we need to. I've been doing city planning for over, well, closer to thirty years now, managing, you know, the planning and engineering and economic development, code enforcement, building programs for a city of a hundred thousand people. And it's nice to come down to scale and look at a community that's got such dynamic planning issues occurring with the waterfront, the downtown, the growth management issues, just a growing area. This is exciting. So I'm really excited to get into this, but I wanted to just be really upfront about what this zoning code update is like in my eyes. And as we think about this project together, it's not the type of thing where you just show up and you just start putting code on the screen and we look at it. I think I want to give you sort of paint a picture for you of how I'd like to look at the zoning code update. I actually had two slides I had time to put together to take, because I've been so busy working on permits and things like that, that I decided, no, let's just have a conversation tonight, and we'll save the PowerPoints and some of the, you know, materials for another date. But really where this starts off is just to refresh around some of the legal concepts, and Fonda, you know, it's going to jump into that. We can certainly play off each other with, you know, sort of tales from the nut house as we've seen some things go awry in land use planning and permitting. But then really what I like to do when we're approaching this update with you is let's talk about our policy documents. You've just gotten through an extensive process of master planning in the comp plan. I'm going to sit back with city staff, and we're going to cull through those documents, and we're going to start to tag things that are really germane or relevant to the zoning code. Not everything is. And some of it might be a little bit of a stretch. We want to just kind of catalog this stuff and take a look and start to digest it ourselves. And we want to bring that to you and say, this is kind of what we're seeing. And the reason why that's important is because when this gets technical and when we get into the weeds, and it's going to get complicated, inevitably will, we're going to need a lighthouse. We're going to need something that brings us back to center. And what that is, is the work you've already done in your comp plan and in these master plans. That's the policy expression. The way I like to use it sometimes is that's sort of the mother speaking to the daughter, which is the zoning, or the father speaking to the son. That's really where we want to get our inspiration when we find ourselves not sure which direction to go on something. So I want to have a pretty easy-to-follow sort of matrix of those policies. I haven't read them all myself. I've only been here for a month. I've barely scratched the surface as I've been trying to understand the administrative procedures here and look at the permits that are pending. So that's really one point of departure, and it's really important, I think, for all of us to feel comfortable with that. It may be a little bit of a repeat for you on some things, but I can't get you there until we're all having a combined and collective sense of, yeah, this is the lighthouse. This is where we're going. The next thing after that, I want to create a work plan where, no matter what piece we're working on, you can sort of see how that relates to the whole. That's going to be helpful, because inevitably, when you're talking about zoning, you're so down in the weeds, you're on the ground. You're talking about setbacks, building heights, relational issues, could be historic conservation and preservation techniques and methods. You're so down into the weeds, sometimes it's hard to zoom right back out. And I want to be able to have us all understand, well, here's what we're talking about, and this kind of relates to this chapter, this portion of the code, and that's the overall whole of it. I find that to be helpful, to be able to zoom out. And sometimes when I'm working and training staff, I remind them to zoom out and just recollect of what we're actually doing together. And after that, I think what's going to be helpful, and this is coming from just my first observations of the code, having been here for a month. I'd like to produce an annotated outline for you of what I think this code could look like in the end. Just the reason why I say that's not necessarily any detail, but right now, it's the way it's organized. We're mixing process with regulations. We have got cross-references all over the place. It's highly complicated to follow. I think that's difficult for property owners. It's difficult for, you know, regular community members to open up the code and try to find your way through. If it takes me forty-five minutes to figure out what your setbacks are, that's a problem, right? And I've been looking at codes for a long time, so I want to, I want to, I want to take a look at what an outline might look like. So very clear administrative procedures, very clear use regulations, very clear development standards. And then we begin to layer and deepen and make sure we're not creating too many of these cross-references. So just basically, it's the user-friendly customer service side of the business, because after all, you've got all these user groups, the real estate community, investors, homeowners, yourselves. So I think an annotated outline is also helpful, because also, when we actually bring you a provision, whether it's on ADUs or historic overlay, we may be writing that code to adopt it in ahead of the overall update. And it may be under the current nomenclature in, you know, the structure of the code. But I want to remind you, at the end of this, we may be scrapping it and replacing the whole of it with what we together come up with. So I want to have that outline, that's going to be sort of our idea of what this can look like in the end. And along the way, we may be putting pieces in into the existing structure, but at the very end, don't be surprised when I say, okay, now it's time to scramble the egg and put it in the new format. That may sound simplistic, but it's not. It's actually fairly complicated to get this right. And I'll be working very closely with the city clerk's office as well, because there's, we don't want to make sure we're creating something that's inconsistent with the balance of the municipal code. So there's a lot that goes into that, and that's why I'm not just going to show up here and say, oh, great, let's tackle commercial A. Let's step back and look at the size of this project together and put a real professional work plan together that we can all agree on is a good way to march through this. I think that's going to be, it serves as a good guidepost for all of us. The next piece I want to just touch on is sort of this zoning at a glance, as I see it, having been here a month, is that, you know, there's a lot of priorities, and we need to focus on the high priorities first. And our city council is going to be setting that direction for us. Obviously, to have input from the planning commission, that's only natural. And I've been directed through Jason, my boss here, that, you know, hearing from council, we're going to be focusing on the commercial A and historic overlay, you know, at or near first in Cedar. And that's, council said, this is really what we want you to start to tackle first. I heard from the commission, I think it was the first day I was employed, I came to the meeting, first or second day, and the commission is clear that they're really interested in seeing the work picked up and kind of finalized on the ADUs. So I'm going to see what I can do about tag teaming some of this. Hopefully, the permit level kind of dies down so that I can get to some of this this winter. Right now, we have brand-new staff inexperienced with permitting, so I can't just have this new planner expect to take on the permit load. I have to be there to get through it with her, together with her, and probably take a lot of it on myself. So that's going to keep me from getting to this project in any meaningful way for a couple of months. But then, then through, over the winter, I'm hoping to really make some progress and start to get this work plan together. And along the way, I want to be bringing to you just some advisory tips from the American Planning Association. There's some planning advisory service memos, whether it's on historic districts or just coding in general, things we can talk about as we get warmed up for this and sort of start exercising our code muscles and try to make it fun. Let's have a good time together when we do this. Let's, we really want to have the community participate, but this is almost like a working group, right? The way, and one way to look at it, because there's so, there's so much to do together. I mean, in the end, you know, of course, after we get through the drafting and all that, the very serious nature of making your formal recommendations as we go forward is, we'll take that very seriously, and that'll be a very formal process. And the last piece was, let's not throw the code out. Let's just revise what we need to. It's not, you know, there's some things there that have treated Sandpoint well, and I think they hear from the commission what parts you really think are working. I'll share with you the parts that I think are working with, also I'll share with you areas where I think we need to make some improvement, just organizationally. You know, in the end, this has got to conform with the comprehensive plan. Again, that's the father that speaks to the son. That's the mother that speaks to the daughter, which is the zoning. And just a reminder that, you know, drafting new code language is time-consuming, and it's got to involve community input. So it's not a footrace. This is sort of a marathon, and I think this is probably a project that's going to take us two years to do, to be honest with you. I think it's going to take, I think it's going to take us every bit of that to get this done, depending on the permit load and how fast we can get Radica trained up to do some of the permitting. It may take longer than that, but really excited about it. Just want to take this evening and give you sort of a picture of what I see. Is there any questions based on what I've shared, just in terms of my at-a-glance of a code update? Chair, if you, any comments?
I guess the only question that I might have is, when you talk about the nuts and bolts of the coding, does most of that originate from you or city staff or us or community? What's the point of origin for those types of coding changes we might be looking at?
Well, I think it's going to come from all the above. So you're going to have ideas on, you know, you probably have some things on your mind right now, like whether it's ADUs or something else, you have ideas, and those are going to come forth in these conversations. I'm going to have my ideas as well. I think my staff's going to have ideas. Fonda's certainly going to have ideas. Jason. So there's really no monopoly on good ideas. It's really how we put it all together. I certainly will be looking at how one little thread relates to another thread. And the way I like it, it's like pulling a, it's like pulling a little thread on grandpa's sweater, right? You pull that thing, and next thing, the whole thing can unravel. You have to be very careful about what you're doing. So I'm going to have my mind on that a lot. And just by nature, that's going to cause me to say, well, gosh, I think we need to tweak this piece of the code. Gosh, I think that's a piece we need to tweak. And I'm going to bring all that to you. I'm going to really show my math on this, on what I'm thinking, but along the way, you're obviously going to be leading us and, you know, what the outcomes are. What I really want you to focus on are outcomes. Leave the technical work to technical staff. Think in terms of outcomes. We, as a team here, are going to get into the code language. And it's, you may be tempted to want to go there in the nuts and bolts and actually write the words yourself. There'll be room for that, but really what I want you to do is think in terms of what outcome do you want? And it's going to be at a more granular scale than the comp plan outcomes you were talking about. So that's how I would offer up an answer on that question. I think it's kind of all the above.
Okay.
And this code analysis is required because you adopted a new comprehensive plan. So under Idaho code, you are required now to go into your zoning code specifically and make sure that it is consistent with the new goals and policies that were established in the newly adopted comprehensive plan. So that's part of what is going to drive the need for this project, and that's also Bill's passion, as you can tell, and expertise for really analyzing and reviewing code as it compares to your goals and policies in your comprehensive plan. You look overwhelmed.
Me?
All of you.
Don't be overwhelmed. It's going to be okay.
That's the best part. I think it's.
I think, I think in some aspects, we're excited because we've been waiting for this.
Because we've met three times this year.
Right.
Well, we'll get, we'll exercise our muscles. We'll start, we'll start to really begin this journey together here. Hopefully, this winter, we'll actually get, we'll make some progress on this structure of this. And I'd love to get an outline put together, because that really gives you a snapshot, you know, where we can start to hang ideas, right? Without that, it's, another tool I think is also helpful is just understanding really what any given regulation we may come up with, what the real effect of that is. Let's look at the vacant lands map. We're going to develop one and say, okay, yeah, there could be a conversion of a lot or two around town, but really, you also have to keep in mind that some of what we come up with is really going to be applicable to a small select grouping of parcels. Other pieces that we write are going to have a big effect, right? You know, it could be new historic guidelines and regulations for portions of downtown. So it's really a fascinating project. And any commission that can do a comprehensive plan update and then get into zoning, that's a home run. If you can do that as a commission, that's, you know, that's a dream. You know, most commissioners don't get to do that. I mean, comp plans are updated once every ten to twenty years. Well, five to ten, but sometimes it stretches a little longer. You know, inevitably, right? And a zoning code update is even more infrequent, because a lot of times what happens is you'll do a comp plan, and then your staff will go through and just say, yeah, here are the three little pieces we need to tweak. But I think now, my marching orders are to look at the whole of it and see if we can't make some improvements across the board. So we're going to have some fun together.
Bill?
Yes.
Does the scope of your work include thinking about the ACI and establishing boundaries?
So I could probably answer that a bit better, only because the legislature just adopted an entirely new area of, they don't even call it area of city impact code anymore. They call it area of impact. I was just looking at it today, and we are actually all required, every city is required, to negotiate and come up with an agreement with the surrounding counties for the area of impact by the end of two thousand and twenty-five. We have been tasked with doing that. So it will be on Bill's plate, even if he doesn't know that yet, but the.
I'm learning that now.
The new Idaho code is going to drive that process significantly. Pardon me?
What's the spirit of the change?
I haven't gone back into all the legislative history of that, but I was actually just looking at it today when I was reviewing for this tonight, and it looks to be sort of the consuming of farmland and what the race of municipal jurisdictions toward each other and less opportunity for cities to only be negotiating with counties, but really needing to be negotiating with each other.
Got it.
So it's really, I think, being driven by this idea of a regional approach to planning. You also see it in the changes to the regional transportation plan requirements. So I think that those are married and coming hand in hand. Yeah, we have been very specifically tasked with managing area of impact.
Figure it out.
Figure it out by the legislature.
And will that, I'm sorry, just kind of follow up on that. Will that include, and I'm not sure, I've got the name right, I think it was referred to as the Boyer Slough area, but I don't know if that's a fact or not, but along Highway Two, as you exit Sandpoint, you're in the county for a little while, and then you get into Dover, and there's some vacant land at both sides of that divide, you know? And I think it was in the comprehensive plan that they talked about, I think, some interest or maybe even need to negotiate with Dover over, you know, what are we going to do with that, you know? Because it was the vacant land comment that you made, that I'm thinking in my head. I live near Highway Two, and, you know, it's, that's going to be maybe a place where people take an interest in building something.
So his vacant land comment is in relationship to doing an inventory within your city boundary of your current vacant lands and the appropriate development and growth opportunities for those.
That's right. It's really, it's got a foothold in planning and another foothold in zoning, if I want to distinguish between the two for a minute. The ACI and the area of impact is not something you see on a zoning map typically. At least I haven't. I'm new to, you know, what Idaho zoning maps look like, but that's something you would see more commonly on a comprehensive plan map.
A future land use map.
Yeah, a future land use map. So your zoning ordinance only applies to the city limits. But nonetheless, it sounds like we have a work product that's going to become a commission, whether it's part of the zoning update or not. Lots of opportunity to figure that out together.
Well, just on this subject, um, okay.
No, and we were going to tell you, it is a free-for-all. Ask whatever question.
Well, you know, it just.
Get the gloves on.
And maybe it strikes me that the designation of an area of impact that's sets forth a relationship with the county and the city, and there's some consultation that's needed. And maybe, depending on whether the commissioners in the county care or not, but the idea is that this may become part of the city someday, right?
That's correct.
Otherwise, why would you care?
That is the statutory definition.
So for it to become part of the city, there's annexation that needs to occur. And so my question now has to do with annexation. I mean, is that a thing, part of, it's not zoning, but is that, it's a.
So annexation is all governed by state code, so we're not going to be addressing annexation code within the city code. So.
Oh, okay.
So annexation is, and the rules around annexation are all found in Idaho state code and are governed by Idaho state code.
And we can't add or subtract from that.
Not as far as the process goes. You kind of already have in your comprehensive planning by identifying areas of growth opportunity outside of your jurisdiction. Those will further be solidified in this negotiation over area of impact as that comes forward over the next fifteen months. I'm not sure what your specific question is related to annexation, but you are correct. Your area of impact, we used to have, and we don't really have it now anymore, as of July first, we had our area of city impact, and then we had our exclusive tier. So our exclusive tier was contiguous to our city boundary, and that, when we identified an exclusive tier as a municipality, what that said to those landowners as well as to the surrounding jurisdiction is, if that property comes forward for annexation, it is our intention to annex it. So it looks like we still have some opportunity to identify areas that are contiguous to our boundaries that we would be interested in annexing if growth opportunities present themselves, and that will be defined in these negotiations regarding the area of impact. So.
So to build on Scott's narrative here a little bit, so taking that piece of land specifically, are there things we would do now within city code to make that an easier annexation, a better annexation, a more thoughtful holistic annexation relative to what's in, let's say, the comp plan, right?
So the only thing you'd be looking at would be if those properties, for instance, are barelands or where are they located. It might play in a little bit to this vacant land inventory. And we're only specifically looking at within the jurisdiction, but you're of course going to see a map of that, and then you're going to be identifying areas outside. And so you would be negotiating and identifying if those lands were to annex, this is how we would want them zoned, or what we would like to see their uses. That's why you would see them now on a future land use map.
Got you.
And you would be, yes, speaking now to what you might think in the future that land you should be, yes.
Yeah, there'll be a comp plan designation that guides what the zoning would be once it's an annex, once, you know, when and if it becomes annexed, and then, of course, whatever. And that's been interesting conversations as we update the zoning code to see which, you know, thinking about that ultimate annexation of some of that property, you give a first look to see what your comp plan, you know, sort of guides in terms of what the council's adopted in terms of what the intended future of that is. But as we're writing the zoning code, we're going to have in the back of our minds things we want to change, things we want to prove upon. And maybe there's a zone district that we have to create, because we have some things, some opportunities that we may not have had before. Those are, that's the exciting part of the zoning code update, when you actually see a piece of vacant property and you have these community goals for whatever they may be, economic development or more affordable housing, or whatever they are. We get to, we get to, we get to create some tools.
Mold and shape.
We get to mold and shape. You know, you have two residential zone districts today. Well, maybe there's a third in the future. I don't know. These are the types of things we're going to get into, and we're going to ask ourselves what and why, how, when, you know, would these things be applicable? It's going to be so fun. We're going to have a blast doing this.
I think he has a different definition of fun.
We know we're in fun. It's all good.
Do, does any part of this discussion not the, look at policies and procedures for the city of Sandpoint providing services outside of the city limits of Sandpoint?
So you know that's another monster conversation that we are having at the staff level. And in some sense, it's going to bleed into a little bit of what we're looking at, probably not as much in the zoning code, maybe in other areas of the code, as we reorganize, as Bill talked about, pulling that thread. You know, there might be little pieces in the zoning code that are affected or that a change to that will affect that issue, but probably not so much.
What happens in permitting is that, you know, zoning doesn't live on an island, right? Zoning establishes some rules for how private property, generally speaking, is going to be organized and developed upon. These are the rules about how private property is going to get developed. And inevitably, in your code, there's lots of, when a permit goes through a process, it's not just the planner that processes the permit. There's a whole team of people, right? You interface with us typically. Sometimes Brandon, a city engineer, will come and testify and provide, you know, input to the commission and answer questions and things. But there's a, there's a team of people that look at these development applications, and they're looking at other provisions of the code besides Title Nine, the zoning ordinance. Because, you know, one thing that comes to mind is it relates to infrastructure and ability to serve. Whenever you're issuing a permit, a discretionary permit, I should say, and you have to make findings of fact, we're going to look at those findings together and ask ourselves, well, what's a germane finding of fact as relates to a new project getting approved? Is it relevant to have, you know, tighten or loosen or change some of the wording on these findings as relates to public services and things like that? Which then, you know, triggers potentially more review by other members of city staff that are involved in the development process or not. So we're going to have a great discussion on findings themselves to make sure that they are meeting our objectives as permits go out the door. You want to have robust findings. You want to make sure that that's really your official checklist that it conforms with what it is you're expecting from the outcomes of development.
And the requirement for the findings has always been in Idaho code. You, anytime you make a decision, we've talked about this before, you have to go through your standards of approval, and you have to make factual findings that apply to those standards to support the decision that you're making. Oftentimes, you all do that in your negotiations. You don't always all do it in your motion. But the Supreme Court of Idaho came out with a decision in two thousand and twenty-three that sort of amplified that obligation as well. So it's, like I said, it's always been in code, but they came out with a decision that said, specifically, if you're going to deny an application, you have to go through every standard of approval and explain factually why a standard is not met.
I'm talking about that last year.
We did. And then, as you know, we've talked about this before, Idaho code requires, if you deny an application, you also have to make a finding as to how the applicant can be successful. And if you don't see a path forward for them to be successful, you have to make a finding on that. So I think we're going to see heavier scrutiny in the courts across the state on these findings. That's kind of the path that developers are moving specifically. They're really wanting to hold our appointed and our elected feet to the fire on these decisions. And so we're going to be a lot more diligent and mindful with you in those deliberations, making sure that you're not making conclusory statements. So that's another thing. You can't just say, I find that it meets the standard. Okay, great. Well, that's a conclusion. How did you get there? Walk through the facts that you have rattling around in your head that support your conclusion that it meets the standard. So, and then the other change that Bill doesn't know yet is coming, but I like to surprise people in a moment.
Especially in a setting like this. Thank you, Fonda.
You're welcome. This is what you can't tell me. Is that you're going to. Is that you're going to see your decisions coming out in a more, more robust written decision that will come to you at the next meeting for your review and approval. So the city's been sending pretty general, you know, your application was approved by planning and zoning last night. We find you met all the standards of approval, but what's going to happen is there's going to be a more robust written decision that you get to see that will come back to you for approval at the next meeting.
Is this, is this for all planning and zoning functions, like CUPs as well?
All discretionary, all discretionary decisions, yes.
Can I just add a little bit here too? I think one, one thing that's interesting is the word because when you're, when you're deliberating amongst yourselves, it's important when you're, when you're going to make that decision, practice it, use the word because, you know, and that's going to cause you to have to answer, finish that sentence, right? I'm, I'm denying this because, or I'm approving this because. The, the, the tendency that we're going to have as we update the zoning code, given what Fonda just said about the Supreme Court and where things are headed in terms of, you know, property rights, generally speaking, and, you know, the ability to get approvals and having crystal clear reasons why things can't be approved. The tendency is to say, well, we're just going to really be super prescriptive in the zoning code. And we're going to, we're going to, we're going to write it all down. It's be super, super detailed. Well, then you, you've just really shot yourself in the foot. Because now you don't have, you know, the ability to, to receive a, maybe a creative idea.
Lost your discretion.
You've lost your discretion and that, that becomes just a simple checklist. It's like, so there's a balancing act to be had there. And, you know, I'm going to learn, obviously, given this new, this new direction that Fonda's talking about. And together, we're going to stitch together, hopefully the right balance between prescriptive and also allowing that flexibility. There's so many creative, so much creativity out there in behalf of these architects and, and landowners and property owners about what they, what their vision is for their property that can better further your general plan than maybe some list that we came up with in 2025. So we want to be careful of that.
Yeah, I want to kind of echo that. Based on my experience working, I worked in the state of Washington's Department of Health. We were seeing public water systems and we dealt with, we were a rules-based organization. And we had many rules, some of which were hundreds of pages long. And we, we, we deliberated sometimes for years on changing our rules. And where we say, as directed by the department, because we, we couldn't figure out all the time what to do. And there's a, there's something very useful and powerful about that. Because it can sort of be tailored to the specific circumstance. But on the other hand, we, we were concerned with establishing precedent that, you know, there is, there's this void. And we were just relying on a group of people at that given point in time to say what you're supposed to do. And people change and, and so we were at least concerned. And so then we would develop policies and procedures to guide the thinking of a future generation of staff on how to think about that issue. Because we didn't want to put it all in the regulation, but we had it all in these policies and, and directive memos, we call them, you know? Okay, so, you know, there's, there's, it's, well, your point earlier, it, it's time consuming and complicated. And, and, you know, sometimes really good intentions can be, be surprisingly difficult, you know, later on when the real world strikes.
You're absolutely right. That, that's, that's precisely why we're going to be careful. I, I, I don't want to, you don't want to rush a zoning code update. I know where, where everybody's anxious and, and eager to, to dive into this, and we will. But we're going to, we're going to be measured about this. And, and part of my job is going to be working with Fonda to sort of, and Jason, is to, you know, we're going to war game this a lot, you know, there's, I have written codes where you, you, we think we have just nailed it. We, boy, oh boy, this is crystal clear. And then I'll, I'll hand it to, you know, a senior planner. And they'll come back the next day and say, well, gosh, you know, what about this? And you're like, oh my goodness, here we go again. So the point is well taken and it's, you know, we're going to work through that. And it, well, mistakes be made, of course, but we're, we're going to come up with the best product we can and I'm going to be testing this. And we're all going to be testing it, war gaming it against, you know, experiences you have, permits you may have processed in the past. We'll, we'll be testing it to see, to see, make sure it's, it's complete. I walked into my office this morning and someone reminded me that there's been five city planners in the last five years or more. And this one particular project had five different interpretations of the exact same code. I'm like, okay, I've heard of two maybe, but five? So it, it happens. And I'm, and I see in, in this particular standpoint zoning code is there's, there's a lot of cross referencing. And after you get to about the fourth cross reference, you're gone. You're gone. You don't even know what you're, you're looking at to begin with, because now you're thinking about an accessory structure when you start off with a commercial development or something. You know, you're just, you're gone. You, you've lost it. So we want to attenuate that a little bit by, you know, we want to tighten that up a bit.
I think we've seen a few of those, right? Where there's conflicting.
Yes.
Every, every code's got it. Every code got it. Because what happens, you update a code and then six months later, a little piece gets added on and then another piece gets added on. And it's natural. I mean, the best intentions in every code is, is like this. It's really rare when you get a chance to say, okay, we're going to take a, we're going to take a fresh look at the whole thing.
It, it also happens when there've been situations where code was amended in response to a specific situation. And that is dangerous. And so then you end up with cobbled together code that wasn't really looked at from a holistic level. And, and what Bill's talking to you guys about tonight is really this really robust process opportunity to look at this code from a holistic level. It is not going to look at, be looked at through the lens of any specific project.
That's right.
At all, and shouldn't be. And if you find yourself going down that, that dangerous trail, you take a pause, walk away and come back.
You're guaranteeing unintended consequences.
You are guaranteed unintended consequences.
We, we're going to, we, it's, it's, this community is still pretty small, right? Geographically, it's not, so some of the, some of the ideas we're going to be kicking around are going to naturally bring you to something that's actually on the ground. I use an example without giving any addresses or anything, just, just an example, just something I saw today. And how I think that reasonable people can disagree on what, what the code says, but there's the kind of thing that I want to, I want to understand is what, what does this community vis a vis what's in the comprehensive plan? And, you know, council's vision and with the commission's input and your vision, what, what, what is allowed to happen on a single family home lot? You know, we're going to talk about that. We're going to talk about that because I, I, I have, I've seen quite a bit and
Yes, you have.
I've seen quite a bit and, and so I, I'm not going to pass any judgment on it because that, that's not what my job is. My job is to bring, you know, analytics, good staff work and help you make the best recommendation on a zoning code to city council. And I'm going to be asking tough questions, but I'm not going to be bringing up permit numbers. I'm not going to be bringing up, oh, the CUP number XYZ. I'm not going to be doing that. I'm going to be saying, okay, in this scenario, a single family lot could do this. Is that what, is that what? That's the outcome of this decision. This is the outcome. If we write it this way, it's going to go that direction, maybe. So I'm going to be asking, what's the, what are the outcomes you want? What do you want to see in a single family lot? That's a, I mean, that's a big can of worms. I, I was unfair to throw out that big one right there, but it, it's an obvious example of, I think the work ahead of us is going to tackle some tough stuff.
Well, it's come up. That
Yeah.
particular situation has come up a lot.
Right. Well, the zoning code allows a lot to happen on a single family code. It's not a trick question for you. The zoning code allows a lot. It's not going to be, you know, trick to commission. It's going to be, we're going to look at the whole of it, but in the end, I want you to keep in mind what, you know, what's the outcome? What's the outcome of this? What's the outcome of this? So.
From, from your, you know, somewhat tenured experience as a city planner, is there a best way to ensure public input as to things like that?
I love to use the planning commission as a, as a, as a forum for most of this. I, I really, when you're, when you're getting into zoning code stuff, you, you guys have a, a very specific responsibility pursuant to state law. And it's really hard to recreate a community meeting sentiment. Now, there's ways to get specific input on specific things in our user groups of the code that are going to be, you know, we're going to talk with, we're going to, you know, we want to talk to real estate agents. I want to talk to land developers. I want to talk to downtown groups. I want to talk to, you know, you know, you name it. We want to have some conversations, not to recreate all the work you've done in the comp plan, but a little bit more fine grained, right? Those conversations. A lot of it's going to be just interviewing people like, what do you like about the code? What don't you like about it? What, you know, what are your concerns? That's going to help us. But I like to use the commission as the place where the 90% of the work gets done. It, it just, it's too hard to recreate those conversations. Too much context gets lost. It, it's like someone told me once when I was just starting off in my career, when I was asked to facilitate a meeting, right? And we've all done that in our careers. Well, you're going to be facilitated at the meeting. And I go up there and, and they, someone, you know, there's a group, a community group and people are giving their ideas. And I start writing down what I think I heard. Wrong. You got to write down what was said. And so I don't want to be in the position of trying to say, well, yeah, the real estate group, you know, thinks this. I think if we're going to have opportunity for people to come out on, on a Wednesday night and, or Tuesday night, Tuesday night, and, and share with you, I think that's going to be the best forum for that very reason. Because now you are getting fine grained. There is lots of nuance, lots of specificity. I think that's going to be the best place to get most of it done.
The other beauty of this is, and we've talked before about the difference between your legislative decision-making and your quasi judicial. So if you remember, this is legislative, so you can speak with the community, you can get feedback, you can get input. You can talk with your neighbors and friends and people you go to church with and that your kids play sports with. And, and you can get feedback as long as you don't filter it through your own biases when you bring that information back to the commission and eliminate half of what you heard. You have to bring the whole broad spectrum of what you heard because that's your job.
Can we actively solicit it?
You can ask people questions. Absolutely. Yeah. You can.
Oh, absolutely.
You just can't have conversations with each other specifically for or more that would
You never do.
Be a deliberation or have emails or anything like that. But you should be talking with the community and, and bringing that information back. That's your job. You are the representatives of the community. You've been appointed, you're, you're a broad spectrum of different interests and professional backgrounds and geographic locations as to where you live. So it literally is the commission's job to be the representatives of the community. So you can talk to everybody and anybody you want to about code suggestions.
We may, we may decide that we need to use a, a survey tool, you know, that's, that's common. You know, a lot of people are, you know, busy at home with the kids and they, they have opinions and they can't make it out on a Tuesday night. So, you know, I think we're going to, you know, I'm going to rely on Jason as well. He's done so much community outreach in his, his, his experience here in Sandpoint that there's tools at City Hall that can help with some of that too, in terms of making sure we get out to the right user groups and whatnot. Well, well, as each issue comes up, I think that ideas will be occurring to us, you know, how the best outreach. But my, my main point is I, I don't want to try to recreate what somebody says for them. I think when you're getting, when you're that fine grained on zoning issues, we're talking about writing rules that, that have a direct effect on somebody's private property. We want to hear from them directly. Yep.
And your number one responsibility under the local land use planning act, private property, right? Your number one responsibility of the commission. So we want to make sure that as we go through the zoning code and revisit it in relationship to your new comp plan, that we are protecting private property rights.
What's the definition of protect? Relative to that.
Not taking from them rights that they currently have.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I wonder if what I'm about to ask about is part of the thinking that has gone into the work you've done in the past 30 years, thinking about and rethinking about zoning and the community you've worked in. So I don't know why, but my interest, one of my interests is infrastructure and making the most efficient use of the infrastructure we have and, and linking the plans for improvement to infrastructure with land use. So that when people want to build something, make use of their property, that that the infrastructure is in place, that, that the communal infrastructure is in place. They may have to build their own road and extend the water and sewer, but everything upstream of that, you know, is going to function just fine. And not to the detriment of hundreds or more people maybe, that, you know, they experience a reduction in level of service, whether it's roads, parks, water, sewer, you know, whatever. So I, I'm sure it's not e- easy, but I mean, has that been part of what you've done? And if it has, is that something that you're going to be looking at or going to want us to look at?
It's, it's a huge part of what I've done. I remember about 20 years ago, when I just started showing up to the city engineer's staff meetings. And after about six months, he just stopped and answered, what, what are you doing here? I just said, I'm observing, I'm learning. I, I made it a, just a personal, you know, interest of mine and a goal. I just, I, I have a thing for wanting to understand how cities work is broadly and deeply as I can. And infrastructure was a huge part of that. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm still brand new here, there are master plans that guide that decision-making. And it's, and it's, and it's important to think about development processes versus what the zoning ordinance contains. Because there, there's a, the zoning ordinance may identify there is a process you have to follow, a CUP, a subdivision, a, a site plan review. But that doesn't mean that it, it encodes all of the things that make that project work. There will be a section on findings that talk about making sure the utilities and services are, are, are made. But that's the really the, the domain and the realm of, in a lot of cases, the engineering staff to make sure that the standard plans, the, the, where the sewer lift stations need to be, where the water tanks go, all of that infrastructure doesn't typically really ever find its way into a zoning code other than being very generically described as something you might be looking at in a discretionary permit with a finding related to infrastructure.
I, I think you may have misinterpreted my question. So if we're looking at land and it may have one small building on a big parcel of land somewhere, somebody might think, well, we ought to change the zoning designation of that to something that enables gigantic dense use of it, whatever. And it's going to generate a lot of wastewater, consume a lot of drinking water, whatever it is, or a lot of traffic. That's what I'm talking about. Like the decision to take that parcel of land and say, let's do something, let's allow something else with that. I mean, do you think about
Oh, yeah.
those pipes that are in the ground and the roads that are near it, you know? In making that decision about how many things can go on that piece of land.
At the zoning level?
At the zoning level, right.
So, so it's typically not done at the zoning level. Infrastructure is a big word. Roads, storm drain, water, sewer, parks, public buildings, public safety. And the list goes on. There's, there's, infrastructure is a big word. Making sure growth pays its way and can not upset a community's sustainable balance as it relates to infrastructures is a, is a critical part of, of any city's responsibility. It's not something you're going to see a lot of in your zoning code. And that's what I'm trying to say. It's, your zoning code is going to get down to development standards or how the physical environment is organized on a lot. The development process may be identified, but what leads to the city being able to approve something contains a whole nother set of decisions around infrastructure that others have to make that aren't in a zoning context. They have to, they have to ask if this 20 acre lot that's got a single house on it now is going to be converted into a subdivision of 400 homes. There's guideposts. I have yet to learn about them here. But, because I don't know the, the answer to your question about what does Sandpoint have in place. But typically, there are master plans that will guide the development infrastructure, level service standards for roads. There'll be water network analyses to make sure that the fire hydrants are, have the adequate fire flow. All those tests that have to be done are completed. How it gets done here, I'm just beginning to, to, to learn a little bit about that. So I can't give you a really solid answer for what happens in Sandpoint. But development is bigger than a zoning code. It's a lot bigger than a zoning code. And most of that stuff, infrastructure related, is not in zoning. The very important tether, however, is, and that's that piece on findings. One really well worded finding relating to infrastructure, as this community defines it, is huge.
As long as, as long as the information that you're relying on came to you in that public hearing. And this is where you cannot use your own personal experience in making that finding. It has to be facts that you heard in the public hearing alone. You, you can't look at your own water modeling. You can't study the, the transportation impact analysis to try to disprove it. Every developer has to do, well, they do their, they, first they do the initial traffic study. If it hits a certain threshold, they have a traffic impact analysis that's completed. Then we run that through our expert to make sure that they've dotted their i's and crossed their t's and that the findings are correct. We have water modeling that's done. We have the, the sewer master plan that directs what needs to happen with sewer. We have water modeling that's done. We have the the sewer master plan that directs what needs to happen with sewer. We have a lot of code mechanisms in place for development to pay for development. You've seen some of that requirement of right away dedication and frontage improvements when somebody wants to improve. So the our code currently has all of the mechanisms in place to address how is this development going to impact the current infrastructure?
Well, these master plans, these capital improvement plans for different utilities are most likely based in part on the current zoning. And so when you change that zoning, you can't necessarily depend on you can't necessarily depend on what those plans say about what the
We're not talking about changing zoning.
Right.
We're not changing zoning.
No, we're talking about, no.
Let me, let me give a, let me just, it's an excellent question.
And that is a great distinction.
It's a, it's a great question and a little distinction. So typically a city will do those master plans and identify, you know, adequate necessary infrastructure based on your comp plan. That's your, that's your vision for your future. Your master plans are forward linking, forward thinking in terms of how are we gonna serve what our community has decided it wants to be vis a vis the comp plan. And then you have a zoning map that has a series of colors on that correspond with the comp plan designations that identify what is allowed to occur from a land use perspective.
Future land use map.
Future land use map.
Land use map, right. So we're not changing that.
We're not.
I thought we were.
Though isn't zoning.
That's right. Two different animals.
Two different animals. Future land use map is what use can occur on these parcels at some point in the future.
But we have nothing to do with changing the land use map. This is commissioner, nothing to do with it.
A new one has been adopted by by the comp plan. You have a future land use map. Your your zoning, let me, let me, you may have a a comp plan that says, you know, this particular area is going to be residential. Now, your zoning map will bring another layer of specificity to that saying it's gonna be residential, you know, medium or residential, single family. That that'll be the distinction, but it still conforms because the comp plan may say this is a residential area, for example. What your zoning ordinance is going to do, because zoning is really the the map in the in the ordinance itself, the, you know, the fifty pages of of code. We're gonna be writing the fifty pages of code, you know, setbacks, floor to area ratios, building heights, relational, you know, considerations. Do we need an overlay district to lay on top of the zoning? Because we want a specific outcome in a certain area of town, maybe downtown for historic issues or whatever. We're gonna be looking at those codes. We're gonna be looking at the minutia of parking. We're gonna be looking at dare I say it signage? I was looking at signage. The so your zoning ordinance has all of the minutia, the instructions written in there. We're gonna look at all that together. In some cases, we won't, we need to make any changes. In other cases, we're gonna, we'll be adding stuff. But it's not planning at a ten thousand foot level. It's zoning at the ground level.
And interpreting relative to state code.
That's right. That's right.
Yes. And that's right. And your master plans are built off of the projected growth that you have outlined in your comprehensive plan and your future land use map.
That's right.
So your master plans are built to look for, we as a city said in our comprehensive plan, that this is the the level of growth and how we want our city to grow and how we want our city to develop. And your master plans are built off of that.
Now, let's say, for example, hopefully this will help commissioner, let's say, for example, someone showed up and said, you know, I've got, I'm a property owner out here and, you know, thank you for the comp plan, but I have a, I have a you know, an opportunity that that I think is worth pursuing and I'm, I'm gonna file an amendment and I want to have the comp plan amended from low density this to high intensity that. And concomitant rezoning that would accommodate that as well. There would be a flurry of activity to try to figure out the infrastructure related to support such as such. And it may not, and the answer may be, well, we just can't support it.
And this commission has seen an application like that before your time. So somebody comes in with a application to rezone their property, but the zone that they want, the new zone that they want isn't consistent with what the future land use map says they can progress to. So they come in with a comprehensive plan amendment application and a rezone application at the same time. And then you have to vote on, you do a hearing on their comprehensive plan amendment first. If that's approved, then you hear the rezone. But you don't hear the rezone if you deny their comprehensive plan, future land use map amendment.
There's
And you just haven't seen one of those yet.
Yeah, it it they're not very, they're not very, you know, frequent. But when they happen, there's a flurry of activity because you've got real big picture issues to to sort out on the, in the, when you're going down in intensity and density, it's a little easier from the infrastructure perspective. But when you're going up, you've got, you've got a lot of work to do as a city staff. And a lot of that doesn't even involve the the planning staff. It's, it's, you know, the engineering team and and whatnot. The the three biggies that you wanna try to visualize in your mind are, you know, the comp plan map, that's your, that's your, that's your plan for the future. The the zoning map is really a a detailed description of how that's gonna occur. And land use is entirely different. That's what you see on the ground today. Well, you know, someone asks, well, what's what's your land use map? Well, that's what's actually occurring on the ground. So there's, there's the, the comp plan is aspirational. The zoning is gonna have a a zoning district that implements that vision. It's 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 finer grained, more more specific.
Is the, is the future land use map tied to the comp plan?
Yes, it's, it's, yeah, the company's got all the policies in it and the map. Those two to go there are just like the zoning ordinance has the map.
When I rolled onto the commission was, we were right in the middle of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you, you, one thing I recommend you all do at some point is pull up the comp plan, which is now on our city's master plan website. Link and then pull up the current zoning map. And you can see, yeah, to to Commissioner Torpey's point, there's not a lot of discrepancy between them. There are very few parts of town where we have our current zoning map that conflicts with our with our future land use map. If there were, then there might be opportunities for us to initiate, you know, zone changes from within City Hall. For the most part, those zone change requests are gonna come from developers.
I remember some weird little pockets, but generally they felt pretty.
And and my my guess is most, any zone change requests we would see unless they're relatively minor from maybe
Commercial to industrial.
Or mixed use residential to, I don't know, industrial business park or something that's very similar. It's also gonna require a a future land use map amendment to the comp plan. For for like, an example, we've had in the past without naming a specific project is, we had a a neighborhood that was low density residential was what it was on our future land use map. There was an industrial request to come in on that property. That required actually amending the comp plan map from low density residential to industrial to accommodate that development.
And that's not a findings thing, by the way. That's, that's a, you know, like, one was saying, that's, that's a, that's a legislative act. And the commission doesn't have to go through the findings process for that. It's, it's a, you know, do we think this is a a good for our community thing? So, great questions. And and this is gonna become, you know, a little more second nature to you as we, as we get into the details.
Another, your question also made me think, Scott, about the simultaneous effort going on right now is the development impact fee study, which kicked off last week. So you're talking about the impact on infrastructure and levels of service to existing users. That's what our DIF study is all about. It's establishing the current level of service for streets, pathways, parks, police and fire. Those are the five development impact fees that we collect with every new development, commercial, industrial or residential in in town. That the current study will will dive deep into our current level of service in all of those areas. And then readjust our development impact fees so that all future development. That that those development impact fees, when paid to the city, allow us to maintain the level of service that existed before that development took place. New population or activity that that development enabled.
We can't cure current deficiencies.
Right. That that's, yeah, so it it it's it's literally how growth pays for itself without diminishing the level of service to everybody else who's here.
And your comprehensive plan, which is now adopted, is what directs your master plans. Your master plans are what direct your capital and blue, capital improvement plan. And it's your capital improvement plan that's the foundation of what you can collect impact fees for. So they they all feed off of each other.
Question then on, should those plans be updated since we have a new master comp plan?
That's happening now, right? The master plans will be updated now that the comprehensive plan has been adopted.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, that's the next step.
Okay.
Yeah. And those master plans span across departments of the city as well, of course.
Some of the master plans actually, though, were adopted previous to the finalization of the comp plan and are still relevant, like they don't need updated. But, but yeah, it'll be looked at as to what needs to be updated.
Quick procedural question. Is there any structured training we're supposed to get through tonight? Okay. Because we could do this all night.
Oh.
But if there's anything
I had stuff tabbed in case you guys sat and stared at us like deer in the headlights, but no, these questions are great.
Yeah, they're great questions. They're just, you know, more of a chance to just share with you a little bit about how I see this project unfolding and
We're a fun group. We disagree a lot, but
That's what makes you fun.
That's what makes you fun.
We truly do.
Yeah.
Good group of colleagues.
That's a great
So so chair, that's that, that's what I had to share this evening in terms of a kind of the vision for, you know, adequate zoning at a glance.
Cool. Excellent. Thank you very much. Is you, are you, do you see anything coming down from the state level that's really gonna sort of change our world at the zoning level?
No, it happened in July. The the new codes came out in July. I don't really see anything else. Are you monitoring anything?
I mean, at the zoning level, maybe not. I think the 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 deregulate ADUs could be coming about next year.
ADUs are gonna continue to be a hot topic. Yes.
Yeah, you you asked earlier about what was like the intent of the the area city impact legislation. I I've, I've thought of it as they literally took the city out of the area of city impact. And and the, I was just reviewing the language after you mentioned that and it really does allow the county commissioners to just establish areas of city impact. And if we don't work together with our neighboring cities to come to, well, first of all, the processes, we we have to engage the city planners from Dover and Ponderay. We have to come together in a room and and agree on what our combined
What's the mechanism by which that happens?
And it's literally an email and then a meeting.
Meeting.
Yeah. I I've begun that process before Bill started, but
The mayors will be involved.
Yeah. So we we come together with the other two cities in this case. We then bring our proposed AIs to our respective city councils. If they approve them, then that that combined three city AI proposal can go to the Bonner County Commissioners who can either accept it or reject it. And if they reject it, they can just say, no, your areas of impact are your city boundaries. The default is city boundaries.
But but the code also built in a process for us to have the district court involved if there was a disagreement. So that's the other thing it it created for us is an opportunity to get in front of the court. Okay. If we don't like what the commissioners do.
Oh, that's interesting.
Is there anything, I mean, are we gonna have meetings next month? Is there anything that's coming our way or?
I'd like to say, I'd like to say yes. I think in accordance with some of the policy documents that I want to start reviewing. It's, it's, I'd be very candid, it's very difficult for me to get to that right now with it, with the permits that we're processing and in trying to get a new planner, you know, trained and just learning the code. We'll be meeting, but it might, it might not be twice a month, you know, and I'd like to bring some things from the planner's advisory service from the American Planning Association. And again, just some things, even if we have a conversation about some things that are upcoming in terms of these topics in the zoning ordinance, I think that could be helpful. So I I'll try to make it meaningful, but if I don't have anything that's that's really gonna be meaningful, then then it wouldn't be prudent to bring you, to bring you out of your busy lives to do that, but I have my marching orders to get this done. I intend not getting it that way, so.
I'm not sure what we have coming for a public hearing.
I don't think there are any public hearings in the pipeline for
I think there's two.
That are at the city council.
I think, I think there's a, there's a CUP I know coming.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I know there's one CP that was just filed, so that's probably gonna be a couple of months out.
We're required to have one planning and zoning meeting per month, nine months out of the year.
Right.
So that's, that's a statutory requirement.
Yeah, more, more of the short plat level of stuff on our desks right now, not so much the bigger subdivisions.
Uh, the entire planning department is full, which is nice. Every position is filled. It's been a while and I think they, they seem to be a quick learning, robust team that I think will impress you. So good, yeah. Jason's leading the
Yeah. I I love our planning team.
We'll try to keep up.
I'd say we're so far in the first month of being a full team, I'd say we're functioning very well.
Very well. Good. It's great. It's exciting to watch. Yeah. That's fantastic. And with the new reorganization of the city structure, Brandon's not technically under planning anymore, but he's still doing just a great job of working together. We're still having weekly planning meetings with our entire team, including Brandon and now Heather. And so that serves us well to really, we spend some time every week. Heather's back in the mix.
So Heather, with the reorganization under the new mayor, was was kind of left homeless because she was under central services, working directly under Jennifer before.
Yeah.
She was reassigned to community planning and development. But the community, community planning development is really parks, rec, planning and building. So we had to kind of find a home for Heather within there. And she's, you you guys have worked with Heather quite a bit on the ADU language. She's probably the foremost expert at City Hall about historic preservation, of course,
Hope to again.
Potential establishment of historic overlay districts. So we've actually changed her job title to historic preservation, our arts and historic preservation planner. So she's kind of going, going on to Bill's team along with Radica, our assistant planner. And then the the building team is Pete and Olivia. Pete is our building official, soon to be building official. He's the interim building official. He needs to get some of the licenses to be the official building official. And then Garen Wilson is our new building inspector who took Pete's position. Garen has worked in the local construction industry for years and had been the subject of Pete's inspections over the years. He had gone through that dozens of times, being a foreman for several large building projects around town. So he's now on our team. He opted for the, the, the easy life in City Hall.
Wouldn't you anticipate Pete to be fully certified?
By the end of this year, he's, he's taking one day off of work right now to study for his exams. I shouldn't say, he's, he's not taking a day off work. He's studying one day a week for his exams. Yeah, as part of his job. So.
Excellent.
Yeah. And in the meantime, Christine Coleman is actually under contract to sign those building permits and do the final reviews. It's going great.
Excellent. I'd probably just give you a basic reminder regarding the fact that you're all subject to the open meeting law requirements, as you know, as well as the Public Records Act. So anything you email to each other, email to staff is all subject to a public records request. Some electeds and appointments think if they just CC the city attorney, all of a sudden it's protected by attorney client privilege. Is not the case if there is legal interpretation required or you're CCing us so that we can monitor a dialogue that has some legal implications, then yes, it would be protected. But simply adding us to the CC line does not protect the communication. So let's not make our city clerk's office have more public records requests to answer. Let's be mindful of making sure that all of our communications and deliberations happen here in the public forum. That's what they're for. Of course, these are recorded, so anybody can go back and listen to our conversation as well. And this is where it's supposed to happen. So I'll just remind you of that. Don't be on your cell phones during a meeting. I shouldn't have to say that, but I do have to remind people of that regularly. We have literally had, not in this city, but I've had elected officials who are on their cell phones during a meeting and all of a sudden there's a public records request for everything off of their cell phone that they were doing during the public meeting. So just be careful. There's a, there's a, you know, a large portion of our population really is looking for transparency and they're entitled to it. So we want to make sure that we're conducting all of our business here. Absolutely. That was just my last little bit of reminder.
All right. Anything else on this topic? Before we move on to what little bit is left on the agenda, which is our commissioners' roundtable. Any commissioners have anything they would like to discuss other than what we just have?
All right, Mr. Chair, just, just to kind of follow up a little bit. It would be nice, even if you don't have anything really for us to be doing, we can sit up here and discuss as a board and some of the stuff like the ADUs or if there's some other things that you think we should be discussing for a couple hours, we can come as a meeting and and do it. And I think it would help keep that cycle going a little bit. You know, you start meeting once a month. Then your meeting at once a month is gonna be a hearing. Pretty soon, we're two, three months out, trying to remember on the, what we're doing for the other part of it. So just as a a thought that we kind of
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
We've been in a major lull.
Yeah.
Major. It's been boring. We'll get you back in the
That one six and a half hour meeting.
That was hugely important. So you're gonna be busy.
That's got a lot on his mind, I want to hear. I said, you've got a lot on your mind. I'm very curious to hear. I appreciate your time, friend. He would like a map showing pipe diameters throughout, throughout the city.
Call Brandon. You're hired. Yeah, be careful. We have other people who went from a chair up there to a chair over here. He literally went from that chair to the council chair.
Don't let it happen to you.
All right. If we have no further business, this meeting is now adjourned at six forty-two. Thank you all very much.